The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence fifty minutes prior to the start of the regular Thank you. We have Henry Valerio.
Hi, how are you?
Good. If you could just please state your name and address, and you please have a seat if you like. Yeah, thank you. We can get another chair probably too. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Hi, can you let me pray before we start to talk? Can I pray? Thank you very much. Thank you, my God, for giving me the opportunity. And my language is Spanish, but I speak a little English. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain the situation with the other people right here. I know that everybody worried for the situation of the community. That's the reason you bring me right here to explain. It's not only the condition for my daughter, it's for I'm worried for the community people, students here. Thank you, and I want to start to talk about that. Thank you, my God. My name is Henry Valerio. I'm computer science. I was a teacher for twenty years. It's not here in my country, but the same thing, because education is in the world. Either way, do what language you're speaking. And I was a military teacher. I'm your training. I explain about me that you understand how this one, how can I help you? My reason that we come here is for how we can help you with the community. Because now every day, I'm a businessman too, and every day I feel like the city of Philly, I feel like a little not safety. It's on you for some reason. My point is, thank you that I talk with somebody to explain what happened with my daughter. My daughter every day get like a feel sad. She come back in the home sack because they do bullying. There are people do bullying. I go to the school, make the meeting, but I don't see so this one work, because every day, different situation. And today, it was the last day that I was there in the school for again, the song girls or student more following my daughter. And the first time that she go to take the bus, and then the lady or the another student tried to fight with her, and she following the bus, and when she go down, she taking the bag and put it down, you know, and my daughter don't want to fight, but that's not that's not the point. The point is to, when I go to the school, I think it need more communication. Because when I was there, and the some people in the in the in the school, in the by precedent the school, and then, I'm sorry, it's a little nervous because, but the social worker asked me, oh, somebody call you yesterday told you? I said, no, nobody called me. And that's happened several times, that I suppose that they had communication with me or my wife, but it's not true. And I said, and then, you know, and I come right here and explain the situation right here too, and nobody called me, but they only say, oh, you need call back. But it's very difficult when you try to to figure out somebody, especially that try to help you, you know? I think a little people is Spanish people right here, they need help, but they not open my the mouth like me. They quiet, that's the reason you gonna see. The problem you see you is my evaluation, my personal evaluation. The problem that you see you, when when there somebody come outside in the in coming to inside the school and taking the guns, it's not it's not that start right away, no. They was maybe in the school, start a little by a little, getting the bullying, getting the bullying, when he have it maybe outside, feeling the the high the the school, the um, no, Contaminola, the classical, the the higher school, sorry, the higher school, or they thinking, oh, somebody do bullying for me. This is my personal evaluation, because I see you every time, different point, and people go and do something wrong. That's never put in my mind, my daughter, no. But I think it's when you start to do the bullying, you grow with this putting right here. When you grow, you feel like somebody do something before, and you try to do something wrong. That's how we don't want to happen in Lynn or in Massachusetts again, you know? Because everybody know about the what happening, and know right here in the world. But my point is, I need fix. I need I'm be here to try to help you. I don't know what can I do, but I right now, we can sleep, honestly. We can't sleep because we nervous. I feel I gonna open my mind, I gonna tell you. My daughter tried to kill self couple time, but maybe somebody say, oh, no, your daughter need help. No, I gonna only ask you one question. How do you gonna feel, for example, if all these people come with her and give you a wrong, and and try to give you, what do you gonna, how do you wanna feel? That's happened with my daughter. Yesterday, she got a trouble, she need to running with some house that she don't understand and hide, because the the student tried to, there are no the girl tried to fight with her, but a little guy student follow away, follow away her and make it a wrong. If you see a couple video, that how they fire, it's not only one. Maybe if you fight with me, it's okay, but no, there are no the people, way that you fight with me, and they going hit. If you see the video, you gonna believe me. We have a couple video, and we, when one friends or my daughter record the video, how the another girl do it. Thank you for giving me opportunity, but be we are very worried, because we not sleeping. Now we nervous, because we don't know what happened in the in the school. When I go there, he say, oh, I respect all everybody. Today have the meeting with the police too. Because when I go to make the complaint in the police station, they say, no, you need to go there. And I do the meeting with the police, and the police understand, but I said, the problem is, the school only worry inside, but the problem is in the community too. The by principle say, oh, no, only I worry for my situation. Explain me what happened with your daughter right here? I don't care. No, because you was election, you was election, everybody work right here, because somebody go and vote. Somebody go and vote for you, for you, for everybody. Everybody have a work right here, because somebody select this. You know, that's my point, and I'm sorry for, but we are very worried. We can't sleeping. I can I can do nothing if we don't work together. I don't see so you gonna you can you can fix the problem alone.
Thank you.
That's the problem that a school don't understand. When I asking, who hit my daughter? Who touch you my daughter? And who who fight with my daughter? They say, oh, the law say that we can tell you. I know I know wanted that you tell me for me do something for, no, I'm Christian, and my my wife is Christian, my daughter is Christian. But we need to to know who gonna help you about that. The only reason that they say-
Thank you, Mr.
Yeah.
Just because we there is a time limit when we're, if you could ask you to to please conclude.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, the end is, I want to know how we can help you, and how you can help you me, because now it's very, very strong with this problem.
Can I just say, I want to say thank you for coming tonight?
Yeah.
I know that you had a conversation with one of my assistants, and I don't know if you need translation or not. That was why I asked our staff member to be here. We want to help you, and the district is working towards trying to make change, and I would love to have a conversation with you, face to face-
Yeah.
-in person, to so that I can share with you what we're doing, but also to maybe get you on board.
Capresio.
I will have my assistants get in touch with you to set up an appointment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Valerio. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close the open mic portion of the meeting and to resume the meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. And roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Present.
Member Capola.
Present.
Member Dugan.
Present.
Member Gately.
Present.
Member Magnolia.
Present.
Member Peña.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
First item is the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following minutes. Committee of the whole meeting on December eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Buildings and ground subcommittee meeting on December eighth, twenty twenty-two. Personnel subcommittee meeting on December eighth, twenty twenty-two. Nineteenth regular meeting on December eighth, twenty twenty-two. Committee of the whole meeting on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and committee of the whole meeting on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Post. I have it. Thank you. Next is presentation on multilingual education dual language update.
Okay, as we know, our district enrollment continues to climb in the percentage of English learners. Lynn Public Schools is now at thirty-nine point seven percent L. We have now passed Lawrence, and we are the second largest percentage in the state. The work happening in our MLE office is being acknowledged not only by the state, but also nationally, as innovative and ahead of the curve. Our staff is being asked to be presenters and participants on panels to discuss how to help our L's access learning in a more authentic and rigorous way. The state of Massachusetts is behind in the work for English learners and dual language programming. There has been great effort in our city and our schools to elevate linguistic abilities in our students and our staff. A great deal of funding is provided to support the dual language programming, and the Department of Education expects us to update and share our work and give updates on data to our community of stakeholders and to our school committee. You will see through this presentation all the work that is happening for Lynn Public Schools, as well as across the country, and how we compare within this work. Rania Caldwell and Amanda Campbell will now share their presentation with you.
Hey, everyone. Thanks so much for having us here on the first of the twenty twenty-three school committee. Nope. As you know, we now have two compañeros dual language programs, one at Connery and one at Harrington. As you've seen in our other presentations, we use red to represent Spanish and blue to represent English. This is exactly the same thing that we do in our elementary school classrooms. It helps students be able to kind of compare and contrast across languages. Again, our three pillars of dual language, again, are bilingualism and biliteracy, academic achievement, and sociocultural competence. And so from here, we're going to get into a couple quick updates, but first, a quick refresher on the program structure itself. Both programs are full immersion programs, which means students begin with a larger percentage of Spanish in the early grades, and the amount of English steadily increases until fourth grade. Spanish never drops below forty percent of the day. All enrollment into dual language is by choice. No families are ever required to attend dual language. It's exclusively if they choose to send their child to dual language. And lastly, dual language is for both identified English learners and non-English learners, and those non-English learners can include students who only speak English at home, or students who speak a language other than English at home, but are also proficient in Quick update on, oh, that did not look so good. A quick update on the enrollment. We currently have seven classrooms from pre-K through second grade at Harrington and two kindergarten classrooms at Connery. When both programs are completed, they will go from pre-K or K all the way through fifth grade. And right now, we have just over two hundred students enrolled in our dual language programs in the district. This is a comparison of dual language enrollment and SEI enrollment. As you can see, the class sizes are very similar. This was as of January sixth. The numbers do fluctuate, as do numbers across the district, but as you can see, they're fairly comparable across dual language and SEI. There are two of each program type, so you'll see two classrooms for dual language and two classrooms for SEI. In addition, we also have fourteen students enrolled in our pre-K classroom, but I haven't included comparisons, just because it varies so much based on special education placement and length of day. Okay, now that you guys have all the updates and refreshers, one of the great questions that we've received is, I'm sorry for the formatting, it doesn't look so great on the the screen, is, we've shared a lot of research about dual language, and today, the really important question is, what does Lynn's data look like as compared to the research? National research is great. It helps us guide our work. It helps us plan our programs, but they're only as good as our implementation and as our program data shows. So tonight, we'll be comparing Lynn's data to two key trends within dual language research. And so here I've included a quote from Catherine Lindholm Leary. She's one of the preeminent dual language and bilingual education scholars, and she just notes in her comprehensive review of decades of research, I'm just going to read the quote, "Programs with a higher amount of instruction through the partner language can lead to stronger proficiency in the partner language with no sacrifice to English proficiency." So that is, despite our students spending large amounts of time in a partner language, Spanish, they should be continuing to develop English at the same rate and speed as their English-only or English-majority peers, but they'll see significantly higher gains in that partner language. So, and again, just a couple notes, that's consistent across different program types. It's consistent in research that they found in the United States, in Canada, and across the world, really. They've seen a lot of different program types, and they see that this data is fairly consistent. I apologize for losing my voice. And so, we're going to take a look then. Oh, one other thing I want to note, this trend that they see, it's it's observable as early as preschool. So you start to see this gain in the partner language, as well as the continued development of English language as early as preschool. So that means by second grade, we should be able to start to see this trend in our own program. So the big question is, how does Lynn's program data compare to these two major trends? Are we in fact seeing these trends? I want to give a big shout out to Josh Mower in Curriculum, who helped, well, didn't help, he did gather the data and organized it for us, which we really appreciated. He's a bit of our data whiz around here. So we pulled scores from two standardized assessments, Access Testing in English and Renaissance Star Early Literacy. These are administered to students across both SEI and dual language, and they're administered on a computer for the most part, so it's a very standardized testing experience across program types. And so this allows us to be able to make some comparisons and see if we're seeing, are our kids continuing to gain English while also outperforming in their partner Okay, so first, we'll take a look at access test score comparison. Access measures the development of English language and literacy. All English learners take access each January. We're actually in the process of administering it to our sixty-six hundred L's right now as we speak. And so once students have two years' worth of scores, so in this case, their kindergarten scores and their first grade scores, you can receive information from DESI about their growth and progress. So this is our first year of having access to this data, access to the access data. And so the first row shows two dual language classrooms, or the grade-two dual language classrooms at Harrington. And again, you'll see it's just fifteen students, because they have to have been here for kindergarten and first grade. In the second row, you have the non-dual language classrooms at both Harrington and Connery. Their scores were very comparable, and we wanted to include both schools, since Connery will be growing up into second grade. And lastly, the grade-two non-dual language classrooms district-wide, which is four hundred and seventy-two students, have those two years of data. And that last column on the right-hand side, that's the average scale score change from twenty twenty-one. So as you can see from the change, both dual language and non-dual language classrooms see a pretty similar growth in their scaled score, which means across the board, they're all acquiring English at roughly the same rate and speed. And so obviously, we'll continue to measure this from year to year. We measure it for all of our English learners, but this is a really good benchmark for us to know that our kids, as of right now, are continuing to acquire English despite being in what's a full immersion program. There we go. So our students are acquiring English, which is great, despite spending the majority of their day in Spanish. But from our pillars, we know that the main goal, one of the main goals, is bilingualism and biliteracy, which means we need to look at how they're doing in Spanish. And so remember, the research says that students, especially in full immersion programs, they see huge gains as compared to their peers in other programs in that partner language score. And we know so far that there's been no sacrifice to English proficiency. So the next thing we looked at was this Renaissance Spanish literacy scores. This early literacy screener is required by DESI. It's administered to all students that have identified Spanish on the home language survey, whether or not they're enrolled in dual language. So any student with the home language of Spanish takes this Spanish literacy screener. And I want to be very clear here that the comparison here, the intention is to show the growth of dual language students, not to indicate in any way that SEI teachers are not doing their job, are not doing a great job. The goal of their SEI program is to develop literacy in English. So of course, it would make sense by law that they're continuing to develop in English proficiency. They're not teaching them how to read in Spanish. So we would expect and hope to see that if our students are learning to read in Spanish in their full immersion program, we would see a larger growth in Spanish. So it's simply a way to make sure that our program, the dual language program, is in fact tracking according to its goals. So you can see here, the first row shows our Harrington and Connery dual language students. This includes kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, a hundred and twenty-nine students. Then also the same classrooms, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade at Connery and Harrington. And then the bottom line, I'm sorry, you can't see it too well, but that's SEI programs across the entire district. And so you can see, we're using the twentieth percentile rank, which is what the DESI uses as the indicator of whether students need significant intervention. And so in the dual language program, seventy percent of students are at or above that threshold, twenty-eight percent and thirty-nine percent. Again, just showing us that while they continue to develop English at the same rate and speed, the real gain, that additive benefit of dual language, is that they're experiencing significantly higher levels of proficiency in Spanish, which is great, because that's the goal of Lastly, before we change gears and just give you some updates from the state, now that we've looked at the current status of our dual language programs, this is just a quick reminder of the trajectory of dual language achievement in English. So we know that our students are really tracking according to what the research tells us they should be doing. We've shown this graph a lot of times, and what I want to show is that these two program types, the top two lines are our dual language programs. These programs are the only types of English learner programs that are shown to kind of eliminate that achievement gap. They outperform their monolingual English peers, so kids who are coming from English-speaking homes. The average performance is indicated by that dotted blue line there. So you can see that the the greatest increase we can expect to see is at the end of elementary school and into middle school. So although the gains are very promising right now, we also know that dual language is sort of a long-term bet and a long-term investment on the long-term success of English learners in their, you know, their trajectory into middle school and high school. And so as we think about MCAS in third through fifth grade, we're going to monitor it very closely. We may not see initially the large gains that we, you know, expect to see by the end, but again, the research is pretty consistent that the gains in English achievement, because again, MCAS measures that English reading achievement, that those gains that you start to see, that rapid jump, you start to see at the end of elementary school and into middle school. And here is that chart again in Spanish. I'm just going to pause for anybody who might be following along with that at home. Switching gears to some good news we've received in the past few weeks, we're thrilled to share that DESI has awarded Lynn almost four hundred thousand dollars to support some of our different initiatives in the multilingual education office. First, we received two hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred dollars to support our designation, or to continue our designation as the region's bilingual hub. This gives us access to free coursework for teachers to receive their bilingual endorsements, additional professional development opportunities, curriculum enhancements, and pipelines for bilingual paraprofessionals, parent liaisons, clerks, and even high school students who are interested in becoming teachers. This is our fourth time receiving this grant, and we're really, really grateful for the continued support. We've also been awarded the, it's a long name, Proficiency-Based Outcomes in Languages Other Than English Grant, in the amount of ninety-six thousand fifty dollars. This is to assess our students in languages other than English in fifth and eighth grade to celebrate their pathway towards the seal of biliteracy. We'll also use funds to assess our ninth-grade newcomer students in their native language, so we can see their native language literacy levels. And lastly, funds will be used to revamp world language course offerings to match the world language levels of our students. And for this grant, this is our third time receiving this grant, and our first time receiving funds specifically for curriculum enhancements. And lastly, we received another twenty-five thousand dollars as part of DESI's Pilot of Diversity of Staff Grant. This is the district's third time receiving this grant and our second time receiving money specifically for high school pathways. Since receiving these funds, we already have clubs up and running at Lynn English and Lynn Tech, with an additional club at Lynn Classical expected to start up in the next few weeks. This really likes a particular angle. A key piece of that bilingual hub funding will allow us to begin exploring what middle school and high school will look like for our dual language students. It's really hard to believe that we even are sitting down to talk about that, but experts do recommend that you begin planning intentionally, beginning when students are in second grades. So here we are. So to that end, we've established a transition team to help support and plan for this transition. And so regardless of whether Lynn chooses to offer a dual language program at the secondary or continues with an SEI model, we know that our students need something different when they get to middle school, such as more advanced world language course offerings. So it's really important to begin planning now, so that families and students have a smooth transition into a new building and potentially a new type of program. Although we don't have a recommendation about program type, we're just at the very beginning stages of exploring, there are some benefits to secondary dual language programming that we've learned about that I'd like to share with you. Continuing a dual language program into middle school and high school allows students to deepen their academic language. So we know it takes five to seven years to learn a language, but it takes a lot longer than that to become truly and academically proficient. So even here in Massachusetts, our students take English Language Arts from pre-K all the way through twelfth grade, so that they continue to study grammar and literature and language arts, so that they become fully fluent in English academically speaking. It also allows our students, especially our Latina students, to continue to explore their cultural and linguistic heritage more deeply, and it gives all students an opportunity to achieve higher levels on the SEAL of Biliteracy and the AP Spanish exams. That's really important, because both of those opportunities come with increased college-level credits, the higher you score on those tests. In addition, the research into secondary programs shows that dual language programs can serve as a safe space during that difficult transition into middle school. Students report feeling a greater sense of belonging when they stay connected through their program. And lastly, it's an opportunity to provide inclusive advanced Spanish language content and language and content coursework that includes our newcomer students as well at the middle and high school. And so we've partnered with Dr. Chris Nichols to support this transition to middle school, again, regardless of whether we pursue the SEI model with advanced world language courses or a full dual language program. Lastly, a few quick updates and highlights. Lastly, a few quick updates and highlights. I won't read everything here, but a team of Lynn educators were selected to present on Lynn's interdisciplinary mapping process at NABE 2023 in Portland, Oregon. We also have staff serving on a panel about the biliteracy development and science of reading for state leaders, which includes urban superintendents, mayors, state senators, representatives, and district administrators, and to serve on the bilingual endorsement MTEL development panel. We've also been so fortunate to host DESI officials and will be a site location for a MABE visit this coming February. It's really an honor to be able to share our program, our teachers and our students and our families. They're incredible, and it's always such a joy to be able to show off the hard work of our teachers and staff. And what I really want to share about the visits so far is the feedback we really consistently receive from the visitors to our program, which is that they see a lot of joy in our program too, and they comment on how joyfully the kids are engaging in Spanish and how happy they are to be connecting in such a deep and meaningful way to their heritage. So before I move on to a little fun surprise at the end, just wanted to thank you guys for your continued support. We also couldn't do it without the support of the district and the committee. And so hopefully, we wanted to bring students here so you could see their joy themselves that they could share with you, but it is a little bit late for them. It's a little past their bedtime. So when we have some older students, we'll bring them here to share their experiences themselves. But we do have a video of kids talking about their experience in dual language and what it's meant for them. A bunch of students, which is really interesting, chose to take a really big linguistic risk and do the video in their new language, which is really great, and some students chose to do it in the language they feel most comfortable. So I'm going to see if we can get it to people, guys.
X out of, x out of that five people entered.
I was actually just thinking to myself, this is why you hear me say, "What's my password?"
Multi-authentic.
Yeah, multi-step, yeah.
Is this you?
I know, it's really stressful.
No pressure, no pressure, not at all.
I have my laptop, which is saved on. I'm going to do that for you guys instead. Okay?
Yeah.
I thought I'd be using my own laptops, so I had it all saved and ready to go.
I'm taking in this moment.
I always use Raffi because she can't remember her passwords. This password I know.
We're doing the dramatic build-up for everyone.
This is the video or a system?
I have to change my settings every time I see a computer, I'm so sorry.
Do you smell pizza?
It's just bad.
I'll text him.
Do you guys have these kind of problems?
I have to change my settings every time I see a computer, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Dr. Magnoya.
Yes, so I was able to come hang out with some of the kids. You invited me. It was truly a joyful experience. My question is about this planning phase for the transition into middle school. And I know that both Harrington and Connery were chosen because of the populations that those schools serve, and those are Marshall students, right?
Both Marshall and Breed.
And Breed, okay. So I guess the question is, is the planning going to span middle schools or is it going to be focused on one? Since we have two elementary schools, you know, you can sort of make a case either way. So could you just talk a little bit about that? It might be too early to.
That's fine. So, sorry, my computer seems to have gone very rogue over there.
I'll take your right hand.
Yeah.
Good luck, Seiya.
Talk about crushing.
Sign him up.
Tired.
It is a little bit too early. There are absolutely arguments for both options. Fortunately, we here are very blessed with such a linguistically diverse population with lots of students who can benefit from advanced world language coursework. So again, regardless of the path that we choose between an SEI or dual-language model, it tentatively feels like it would be best served to be able to be developed at both middle schools and then both high schools because of the amount of students that benefit from that type of advanced world language coursework. Again, very early, but that's the tentative perspective. Some districts have to pool all of their kiddos to one middle school and to one high school because they don't have the linguistic population to support programming at multiple buildings, and Lynn does not have that problem. Like I said, we're very blessed to not have to worry about that. We have lots of kiddos who would benefit from advanced Spanish language programming.
And so just to follow up to that, assuming that that's the direction that it takes, is that scalable across the district in both middle and high school, right? Because we have plenty of students who aren't in these dual-language programs, but if the approach is this advanced world languages option, then certainly, almost any student can test into that if they have that proficiency in that language. So unlike the dual-language program, that approach in the middle and high schools could be open to students of all sorts.
Yes, but dual-language would also be open to students of all sorts. So you could have students who come through SEI in the elementary school but have high levels of Spanish proficiency that could join the dual-language program or the world language type programming. And you could have newcomers who are coming in and also could join either type of program. So they both offer a large amount of flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, dude.
Thank you. There's so many successes to celebrate with this program, and I appreciate all your hard work, especially the grant money. Once any money comes in, we're going to be happy about that. But my question is, so the access testing and the Renaissance testing, you know, once a year, throughout the course of the year, is there anything you guys, obviously, there are things you guys are going to do to progress monitor and, you know, work in interventions? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yep, definitely.
Sort of like a day-to-day classroom thing.
Yeah, for sure. So Renaissance is administered three times per year in fall, winter, and spring. And certain students, again, in that, that fall below that 20th percentile rank, they are mandated by law to receive a certain, well, not mandated by law, but recommended to receive particular types of progress monitoring as part of the Mass Dyslexia Guidelines. In addition to what's done that way, we use two, like diagnostic and benchmarking literacy assessments. They're what's known as paired diagnostics, which means they're developed by the same test speakers, one in English and one in Spanish, similar to Renaissance, which has an English and Spanish counterpart. It's called the ERLA, which stands for the Independent Reading Level Assessment. And the other one is the ANEEL, which is the translation title-wise. They're both developed authentic to that language. We administer those assessments formally on a rotating basis so that our students, what we don't want to have happen is every time we sit down, they do it in English and they do it again in Spanish, or they do it in Spanish and then we do it again in English. So we have a rotating basis where we assess certain grade levels in certain times of the year in certain languages. But then progress monitoring through that assessment system, it's a one-on-one assessment system where the teacher sits with the child or makes classroom observations in a small group, that happens constantly throughout the year, and it's all uploaded into what's called Schoolpace. It's their accountability program where you can track the data.
Track the data, right.
I can also add, our ESL teachers who provide ELD to our students in dual-language, we have ELD on the report card, so every trimester, those teachers are identifying on the report card where their current progress is in language development as well, because that's also a required component of law for English learners to monitor their language development in the same manner as the report cards are administered.
And in dual-language, that happens in both English language development and Spanish language development, so parents get information about how they're progressing in both languages.
Great, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Remember, Daniel.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate the updates. I'm a big fan of the dual, you know, the Compañero program, and especially someone who grew up in a bilingual home, I can totally identify. And I'm super excited, I'm really excited about the coursework that you're going to have on the secondary level and planning ahead, because it's going to benefit a lot of our, you know, unaccompanied minors who have a, you know, small window, and at least they can engage, you know, in that short period of time. And I really like it, thank you, thank you, especially all the grant money.
We like it too.
The many highlights, you know, and we'll see each other again. Thank you, thank you so much.
Remember, Paula.
I know you've been to a lot of conferences, so I'm wondering the cost of some of those. Has it come out of the grant money?
Yes.
Okay, so.
All of them have come out of the grant money.
All of the conferences that you've had, right?
Yeah. We're actually going to be able to bring a team of teachers to two different conferences coming up this spring too, which is very exciting.
Remember, guys, Yannis.
Thank you so much for your presentation, as always, very robust and very clear, and appreciate the hard work that's being put into such important work and initiatives for the district. It's, my question is really around the grant funding piece. First of all, the fourth time around, and to receive that, to be the bilingual hub, that's a big deal, and I can imagine the partnerships around that. Could you tell me about the different districts that are participating in the bilingual hub? Because what I recommend, what I remember was Salem was our partner, but I didn't know if we had increased that?
Yeah, so the first year that they offered the bilingual hub grant, one of the priority elements was to partner two districts together, which was honestly a blessing to be able to open two programs. It kind of lightened the load. It gave, you know, another district to bounce ideas off of. It was really helpful. They've since removed that priority element, and so both districts have continued to apply for the money separately. We do, you know, we still work very closely with Salem, but it's not a priority element to apply together anymore, and it's easier financially for one district to hold their own grant money rather than for one district to hold grant money for both districts. It's very complicated. So we only did it that first year when it benefited us. They've continued to receive, I believe they got it for curriculum this year, other the bilingual hub grant, they have a couple different goals, but not the bilingual hub designation, that's specifically Lynn's. Other districts that have received it this year include Holyoke, Worcester, Brockton, Amherst, I want to say Somerville, but I'm not 100% positive. If it is Somerville, that would, they're a new district to the bilingual hub program, and then us is sort of the North Shore regional hub.
Thank you. And could you elaborate on some of the benefits and just what that means, like strategically for us, just so folks could understand, like, the benefits of that?
Absolutely. So the Gateway City Grant, it's only open to gateway cities to be able to apply for. It comes with three different types that you can apply for. The first is if you're opening a new program. We've accessed that money once for Harrington and once for Connery. The second goal, we didn't apply for it this time, obviously, the second goal is for the bilingual hub designation. That specifically requires you to partner with institutes of higher ed to be able to offer bilingual coursework. And then the third one is for curriculum materials development, professional development. And so the bilingual hub specifically helps with pathways towards becoming bilingual educators, and so that's a really huge one for us because our city demographic, we have folks who do the work and want to do the work again here in Lynn. And so it allows us to do lots of outreach with bilingual community members and get them connected to bachelor's programs, connected to, you know, like licensure programs if that's what they need, give them information about how to become a teacher if they already hold a bachelor's degree, what types of credentials and how to pursue them. It also allows us to work with people who are already within our district, so our bilingual clerks, our bilingual parent liaisons, our bilingual para-professionals, and to do the same type of thing. What do you have? What do you hold? What are you looking to do? Are you looking to be a teacher? Are you looking to be a para? What type of teacher are you looking to do, to be? And then the third component is the high schoolers, which is actually the most fun. Not to say that the adults aren't a great time, but the high schoolers are really, really such a refreshing moment. They're so excited about the idea of becoming a bilingual teacher. For many of them, it's the first time that they've, they've grown up bilingual, but they've never considered being a bilingual teacher. And so we've been able to run MTEL prep classes for them. Many of them have already taken, and in some cases even passed, that first MTEL, the Communication and Literacy MTEL, which is very akin to the MCAS when you graduate high school. And so we've been able to kind of give them that comfort level of this is what an MTEL looks like, this is what you can expect from it, those types of things. We've also been able to run those future educator clubs and a few different other things for our high school students. So that's sort of, it's an amalgamation of a couple of different things, all with the goal of developing a bilingual teacher pipeline.
That right there, that's, you know, one point, that's why I had to ask, because I'm familiar, I was researching the hub and what was going on, so I feel like that, you explaining it, it does justice, like, I think that folks should know what that means. It's a big deal. So who oversees the grant program for us? Like, who's watching that? Who's the one applying? Who's kind of, is it cohesive together? Are you the one that's making it happen? Who is doing it?
It's definitely a partnership. I think we have a lot of different people who hold a couple of different pieces of the grant. Generally speaking, I sort of oversee our application process and then the expenditures. We work really closely with our grants office, who are always so flexible with some of DESI's more surprising requirements and criteria that crop up on us quickly, and so they're really great about that. We also work closely with our schools and with our teachers. We have different teachers running MTEL prep classes for high schoolers and for bilingual staff. And so we oversee in our office sort of like the big picture stuff, but we have so many people who are really excited about the work and love being able to be as passionate as they are about bilingual education and share that with potential bilingual educators.
Well, we're lucky, we have a main line to it right here in front of us. And going back to a member Capo's point about going to these conferences and you have state funds that are supporting you, and you guys are highlighted in many of these conferences, this also opens up the gate to eligibility for federal funding, bigger funding. And I can imagine your grant office is aware of this, this is what they do, and with the, with our investment here, it does create eligibility.
It did, and actually, one of the things that we didn't highlight here, because we don't hold the grant, but we have partnered with UMass Boston for a federal grant. It's the National Professional Development Fund. They only funded a certain amount, and the UMass Boston grant that we worked on with, it was ranked, I think, 13th out of the hundreds of applications that they received, and it's a several-million-dollar, multi-year grant. And again, you know, they really sought us out because we have dual-language programming, because we have such a high level of English learners and, you know, the need for professional development and licensure support. So it was really, you know, really great to work with them.
I was just going to add on the bilingual hub, the partnership with BC has also been amazing, and the bilingual endorsement is a credential that bilingual educators need to receive, but it includes...
looks like. This is what you can expect from it, those types of things. We've also been able to run those future educator clubs and a few different other things for our high school students. So that's sort of, it's an, it's an amalgamation of a couple of different things, all with the goal of developing a bilingual teacher pipeline.
That right there. That's, you know, one point, that's why I had to ask. I, I'm familiar. I was, I was researching the, the hub and what was going on. So I feel like that you explaining it, it does justice. Like I think that folks should know what that means. It's a, it's a big deal. Who, so who oversees the grant program for us? Like who's watching that? Who's the one applying? Who's kind of, is it cohesive together? Are you the one that's making it happen? Who is doing it?
It's definitely a partnership. I think we have a lot of different people who hold a couple of different pieces of the grant. Generally speaking, I sort of oversee our application process and then the expenditures. We work really closely with our grants office who are always so flexible with some of Desi's more surprising requirements and criteria that crop up on us quickly. And so they're really great about that. We also work closely with our schools and with our teachers. We have different teachers running MTL prep classes for high schoolers and for bilingual staff. And so we oversee in our office sort of like the big picture stuff, but we have so many people who are really excited about the work and love being able to be as passionate as they are about bilingual education and share that with potential bilingual educators.
Well, we're lucky. We have a main line to it right here in front of us. And going back to a member Capola's point about going to these conferences and, and you, you have state funds that are supporting you and you guys are highlighted in many of these conferences. This also opens up the gate to eligibility for federal funding, bigger funding. And I can imagine your grant office is aware of this. This is what they do. And, and with the, with the, our investment here, it does create eligibility.
It did. And actually, one of the things that we didn't highlight here because we don't hold the grant, but we have partnered with UMass Boston for a federal grant. It's the National Professional Development Fund. They only funded a certain amount and the UMass Boston grant that we worked on with, it was ranked, I think 13th out of the hundreds of applications that they received. And it's a several million dollar multi-year grant. And again, you know, they, they really sought us out because we have dual language programming, because we have such a high level of English learners and, you know, the need for professional development and licensure support. So it was really, you know, really great to work with them.
I was just going to add on the bilingual hub, the partnership with BC has also been amazing. And the bilingual endorsement is a credential that bilingual educators need to receive, but it includes multiple courses in addition to the MTL process. So we're actually being able to fund those courses and provide cohorts for teachers to attend those classes so that they can be fully endorsed through the grant fund. So they don't have to take on that cost.
We actually have 16 educators starting a new course on Tuesday, all paid for via this grant.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Member Gailey.
Yes. I'm like really happy to hear about the bilingual hub. Every year you come back and you make your presentation. And I know you watched the video where all the teachers came in and spoke about the high schools. And that has been my number one concern since that meeting. And it's really good to hear that there's a bilingual hub, that the MTL prep classes are happening. These are really good things. These are the things that I needed to hear because I was really, really concerned what's happening in our secondary, specifically at the high schools, because if they don't get that degree, I mean, they don't pass that MCAS test, then they are going another pathway. And I'm really happy to hear that. Thank you very much for that information. And maybe next time will you add more about this because that is more like on my interest right now. Thank you.
Of course.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Congratulations to all the, the students and families and teachers and administrators that have, that have made this program such a success. I think it's so encouraging. You know, we talked a couple of years ago about that, the, the data behind the rationale for doing this and, and that the multicolored chart with the different lines, trajectories. It is thrilling to see the data that we have bear that out. And just so excited to see that progress. So thank you so much. Congratulations to everybody involved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I gotta get my haunted laptop.
All right. Next item is a fieldship request for Classical Students to Marine Biological Labs in Woods Hole for January 29th to February 4th. What's the recommendation superintendent?
So I so recommend this. I, I'm going to be in full transparency here. Dave Winchester is a science teacher at Classical, but he also is my brother. Love him dearly.
Do it.
He was born with the love of learning and born with the love of nature and the ocean and is an avid marine biologist. And so this is right up his alley. He pitched this last year. They went on the trip last year. I'm going to let you talk about it, but I would recommend this highly.
Hi. This is a little like crossing the fourth wall because I've been watching these meetings for three years solid. Now I'm here. It's weird. So if you'll allow me, I know your time is valuable. If you'll allow me to just give you a short history. So the trip this year happened last year and I apologize in hindsight, we were supposed to do this last year, but I feel like this was a unique thing that nobody ever did before. So we didn't, the district kind of didn't know what we were supposed to do because it's, it's not out of state. It's not out of the country, but it is overnight at a dorm at a graduate level educational institution, the Marine Biological Lab in Woods Hole, MBL from now on. That's what we call it. So we, we apologize that you didn't approve this one last year, but it happened and we didn't find it out till after we went. So water under the bridge. That's why I'm here this year. The district was super supportive and this, I gave you some information is a lot. I'll, I'll do the high points when we get to this year's trip, but the history is teachers get a lot of emails that are too, sound too good to be true. And I got one in September of 2021. That was when we were returning back to the buildings, the students, teachers, all of us. And it was from the MBL. And these two women were telling me that I could bring kids to their facility in February, March of 2022, free of charge. There was an anonymous donor at the time who was identified as Saul Pennell, who's an LCHS grad alumnus from 1967, who became very wealthy, moved to Woods Hole, bought a house, fell in love with the MBL, became a member of the Board of Trustees, was rubbing elbows with Charlie Baker two or three years ago, said, hey, I'd love to get some Lynn kids to the MBL. No offense to Charlie, but he said something like, how would they get there? And so Saul said, well, I'll pay. And that's how I got the email. So I emailed the ladies back and I said, they wanted to do a Zoom meeting with me at the time. And I was transparent with them at the time. I said, is this for real? Like, how many are we talking? How many kids? And they said, how many can you get? At the time, because they had to shut this down. They had been doing it for a few years and they had to shut it down because of COVID. The last trip that was supposed to happen was March of 2020. They were, because of the funding from Saul, they were trying to resurrect the program that you see in front of you at the, the second page. And I said, I'm game. And I threw it out there because they wouldn't give me a number. I said, if I can get 100 kids, they're like, yeah, he'll do that. I'm like, 100? Okay. So that's the number we started at. I got up to 64 because there's no criteria. The only criteria are junior, senior at Lynn Classical High School. They have to be able to go on the dates of whatever week we pick. They, last year and this year again, they had to be vaccinated, the COVID-19 vaccination. This year they have to be, have one booster. That's, that's still in place. Masks are optional this year. Last year, everybody wore a mask except for instructors. Everyone was safe. Nobody got sick. So then I said to them, okay. Then December hit and I lost half the kids. Like my number went from 64 to 30. And then by the time February came, I was to 22. And I just wanted something to happen because I wanted it to happen again this year. We took 22 kids, four teachers. We had a great week. We, it was amazing. We met Saul. The kids said to Saul, you're going to let us do this again next year, right? Put the rich guy on the spot. And he said, absolutely. And he loved them. He had a great time with us. He came one day and met with us while we were in the labs and stuff. So that's the history. This year Saul and the MBL said, let's try 32. They gave me a number this year. And I was like, okay. I'm at 31 slash 32 question mark right now as of today. COVID's not that big of an issue this year, but I do have a few kids who had to pull out because they wouldn't get vaccinated or boosted. And I was, okay, I didn't pressure them or anything. I just said, the MBL's rule is you have to, if they change it, I'll let you know. So we're good to go. To the points that I know are most important to you. It only costs Lynn Public Schools four teachers for five days, professional days. The agreement with Ms. Dun, our principal and my DH, Ms. Moriarty, back then in this, this trip is the kids will be encouraged in the evenings when we have free time to keep up with their schoology. And whatever they don't keep up with remotely, they are responsible for when they return. The teachers also have to keep up with grading and they have, they're not going to be in their classes. I'm one of them. We are not going to be in their, our classes. So we promise and our help, because it's a professional day, we will be putting remote assignments for the substitutes that will be in our place for the five days. And it's the first week of the third quarter that was chosen intentionally. So we'll finalize our grades for the second quarter up, down there. And so it doesn't cost any money. It costs the substitutes. And all the parents for the 31 slash two right now are signed on board. The other thing that's cool, because like Saul said, how can I get a bunch of Lynn kids, his words? And they never, all they said was juniors and seniors. And all I said to my science teachers was, give me names of someone you think should go. I don't care what science they're in. They have to be a junior, senior. I don't care if they're an AP kid, an honors kid, or a CP kid. And so I, last year and this year, the cross section is awesome because it's all of those former EL students, every color in the rainbow, every science in the rainbow, every level. So I'm, that's what I'm most proud of. Cause the kids that normally do this trip from other schools are private schools, schools outside 95 that have way more money. You saw the costs. It went up this year and Saul's still footing the bill. And if you have any questions, I'll shut up because I'm a teacher and I can go on.
Member Gailey.
Well, Mr. Fergiero, you would be very pleased to hear that I, Lorraine Gailey, dragged this guy into Lynn Public Schools.
She is why I'm sitting here.
Back in, I don't know, I was teaching marine biology.
Seventeen years ago.
A while ago. And I wanted to have a marine tank like they do at Kelly's. And he is the man that used to take care of them. So Dave, I am so happy to see how far you've come. I have been thrilled with all the work that I've seen in your classes, all those ocean tanks, all those kids out in the field, just like we used to talk about. It does my heart good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Cause she dragged me to the admin building because I helped her for free because she couldn't afford my company at the time. And, and the marine biology teacher retired and the rest is history. This is year 17.
Oh wait, don't forget. You went to St. Mary's, then Dave went and dragged.
I did a half year at St. Mary's and then Dave stole me. Yes. Any other questions?
Member Castellanos. Yeah. And then Member Gailey. Penya. Okay.
I just want to say thank you first of all for coming to us today to, to discuss this wonderful experience. I'm actually a really big fan of marine biology. I am, I love the Discovery Channel, National Geographic, big fan. I also, when I was reviewing some of these courses in undergrad, I had a physical life science and I actually had to do a project on the DEP and how it like translated into like modern policy implications with the environment. And I think the, this, these type of experiences, they sparked that curiosity. Cause I remember taking that class as an elective and like, wow, this is so interesting and like how I was with other students who, you know, they, they might've had these experiences. Like I, I didn't have those experiences because you, you nailed it. Like the equity piece. Like we, we really don't know. Everyone's going to have those opportunities. And I love the fact that you brought that up. And you, you, you really hit my heartstrings with that because I think these types of experiences are very important, can really change kids' trajectories. Young people, when you're studying something that you might not know about, that might open up their doors to our future, you know, DEP executives who are on the front lines fighting real issues with climate.
It's funny you mentioned that aspect because the form last year and the form this year, any interested student had to write, why do you want to go? Like that simple question. And I wasn't looking for a syllabus of five paragraphs of Jacques Cousteau quotes. There, I, I know the simplest one I got last year was, I think I, it sounds interesting and I think I might be into marine biology, but I don't know. And, and they got recommended by a teacher and they could do all the things. And I said, he's in. And he's like super into it now. And he was a CP kid. And I think he actually took honors this year. So, you know, that's, that was important to me. The weird thing that happened, the reason this exists is the MBL is in Cape Cod and all, it's a graduate level institution where scientists from all over the world go, but they don't go in February. They go in June, July, and August when Cape Cod is nice. So the MBL has all these facilities and these instructors sitting around doing nothing. And they said, why don't we start this high school program? And we'll have the high school kids come and our instructors can teach them graduate level stuff with our stuff. We used a $500,000 microscope and the kids didn't want to touch it. They're like, I'm going to break it. I'm like, no, the guy's not going to let you break it. And so that was incredible to me. Like, okay. And actually I'm hoping a dream would be a similar program, not live in because they don't have a dorm, because Nahant wouldn't allow it. But I, I do some stuff with Northeastern out in Nahant. And I, you know, their winters are slow and maybe their instructors in their labs could have some of our kids do a five day course where they commute to Nahant. We, they have shuttles. And so that's in the works. I'm not promising anything, but something like that would be cool locally as well. So thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Member, then yeah, then Member Magnolia. Yep.
I just want to say thank you. And first and foremost, thank you for helping Lorraine and joining the LPS staff. Thank you. And, oh, and I want to thank Saul.
The great guy.
That's right.
Not just because.
I really enjoyed the, you know, the, I, I witnessed, you know, I, during a site visit. So I saw you engaging and interacting with the students and they were fully engaged. You know, I, I admire, you know, your style of teaching and, and your passion for, for marine biology. And, and it's like, like just to echo what Brian said, you know, on the equity piece, it gives the opportunity to, you know, other students who, who might not be able to even think of, you know, even, you know, reaching that, you know, during, you know, because circumstances, different, you know, backgrounds or whatever. But I appreciate the opportunity for our students and thank you for sticking around. Appreciate it. Thank you, Saul.
Well, that's, on that note, as you guys all know, you guys have been through the mill for three years and the teachers and the kids. And when that came up and it was a possibility at the time, Dr. Tatwiler was fully supportive of it. And when it was all over, I thanked him and, and everyone involved because Deputy Fergiero saved our butts at the last minute. There was an insurance issue that no one had ever come up and Mr. McHugh helped out too and made it happen. And what did I say to him? It was a bright spot in a very dark time.
Thank you.
Member Magnolia.
I think it's safe to assume that our current high school science labs do not contain CRISPR. Am I correct in that assumption?
Ours don't. Theirs does.
No, that's true. And so my question was going to be, this would be their only opportunity to interact with CRISPR.
Yeah.
Likely. I do know that there are some high school districts that have CRISPR in their high school labs. I just wanted to make sure that my assumption about Lynn was correct.
Well, I mean, someday, you know, like any technology, eventually it will, the prices come down. I remember calculators were a hundred dollars. So yeah, hopefully some of this can trickle down. And, and the colleges replace stuff. You, I know you are in.
At North Shore. Yeah.
And then they have like rooms full of stuff. One of our former science teachers worked at UMass Lowell and they would be about to like put microscopes in a dumpster and he'd say, I'll take them to school. And so we have some pretty cool microscopes now that we're going to end up in a dumpster. I don't know if a CRISPR is going to end up in a dumpster. We'll save it if it's.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you bringing it to the, to the committees. It's very exciting. What is the will of the committee?
Make a motion that the Classical Students can attend the Marine Biology Labs in Wood Hole Mass, January 29th to February 4th, 2023.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Can I go? No. Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Next year.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you so much. This is awesome.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a request to accept a donation of $10,000 from Kristy Madis to the Lynn Classical High School Boys Basketball Team. What's the recommendation superintendent?
I highly recommend.
Will of the committee?
So motion to accept a $10,000 donation from the Lynn Classical Boys Basketball Team.
Second. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next, on the agenda is a vote to approve a new Pickering Middle School Educational Plan. And, yep, we're going to organize the AV here.
Mayor, can we take a quick break?
Yeah. Yeah. We're just going to do a quick recess while we get set up.
Same.
As a community of the need to replace the Pickering Middle School. Excellent. Yep. And we all aspire. And we all aspire to give our students and staff a building that values the educational process and provides spaces that support and inspire their teaching and learning. Tonight, we'll share the process taken and the main components of the draft of the Pickering Educational Plan and space summary that will be presented to the Pickering Building Committee on Wednesday, January 18th, and then submitted to MSBA on January 20th. Tonight, this presentation, the agenda will be that I will present an overview and priority areas of the Pickering Educational Plan. David Stephen will speak to the process for the visioning team facilitation. Jean Raymond will speak to the space summary and the architectural design process, and then we'll have closing remarks and opportunities for questions. Our objectives for this is to describe the three-stage process of building the educational plan, explain the major components of each stage, communicate educational plan, priority areas, educational visioning teams, collaborative work, and the architectural design, and clarify any wonderings that you may have. First, we'll begin to draft, well, first, we began to draft, the technical components of the educational plan incorporating our district core values and beliefs, demographics, class size, policy, curriculum instruction, and special education. Next, we engaged with an educational visioning team that was led by David Stephen from New Vista Design and made up of community members, Pickering staff, district personnel, current and future parents of Pickering Middle School, RDA design, and left-field project management. And then finally, we incorporated the priority areas of the educational visioning team into the educational plan and the space summary sheet, which molds the architectural design. The three phases we followed were visioning team, educational plan, and space summary. This is just to share the timeline of all the meetings that we have held from back in October through, well, through next week, or actually tomorrow. No, next week. So that's just there for your information on all the meetings that were held. The process is, was rooted in collaboration. In every stage of the process, there were multiple stakeholders involved in the building of the plan, input of ideas, identification of priority areas, and contribution of different lenses. It was truly a shared responsibility in the writing of the educational plan, in the members of the Pickering Educational Visioning Team, and in the members of the Pickering Building Committee. I just want to publicly acknowledge the team members of all our committees, the partnership, collaboration, feedback, ideas, and support have been very much appreciated through this process. And so, the next few slides just have the names of the members of these teams. So we first have the visioning team, or sorry, the, sorry, the writing team, yep, the writing team, the visioning team, and then, of course, the building, building committee as a whole. David Stephen from New Vista Design will share the facilitation of the visioning work.
Okay, thanks, Dave, and good evening, everybody. So, I am what's called an educational programmer or planner. I have a background as both a licensed architect and also have 20 years of experience working as an educator in K-12 schools. So, this process is really where we work with the community and stakeholders to identify the educational vision or priorities and the architectural priorities connected to a particular project. And the purpose of these meetings is to be able to listen and to get a clear sense of what the district and the community and the school values. It's also to push people's thinking forward about what's possible by sharing lots of ideas, so, and then getting people to respond them, and particularly around how we approach the design of 21st century schools, so that they're really not going to become obsolete within the next 10 or 20 years. So, this is a strategic and targeted process, it builds upon itself. We started on the 9th of November with this group, this educational visioning team that Deb talked about, and we focused on educational programming within the district and within Pickering, talked about sort of what happens now, what is, what's aspirational for the future. In the second workshop on the 16th of November, we connected those ideas to thoughts about design. We shared a series of 36 design approaches, and we call them design patterns, and had people respond to them and then work in small groups to prioritize them when they thought about the needs of the Pickering school. And as a result, we prioritized a series of design approaches. In the workshop three, we talked more about them and kind of made sure that we were getting it right, and drilled down a little bit more on what those design patterns might look like in terms of adjacencies within the renovated or new building. And that was in our third workshop. So, we also had a community workshop on November 30th, in which we also shared priorities that had been established thus far and opened up for the community to share their priorities. We also shared design patterns at that point, and the community could respond. Next slide, please. We always start this process by really looking at a portrait of a graduate and grounding all of our discussions in, in a sense of what's important for kids to know and be able to do. What does 21st century teaching and learning mean to Lynn Public Schools to Pickering Middle School? And in small groups, we discussed a lot of themes, and then each group came up with their own kind of list of the skills that they thought were most important for students. And we created then a composite list, and this is sort of the result of it. So, the things that came to the top of the screen here are students being self-directed learners and passionate learners. We talked a lot about motivation. We also talked about inclusion and accessibility and developing empathy and kindness in terms of social-emotional learning skills. We also wanted the process to be joyful, to inspire students and teachers in a, in a building that really allowed, allowed one to see the kinds of teaching and learning that was going on. So we talked about some level of transparency as well as display and exhibition. We talked about the importance of students being critical thinkers and problem solvers, and having opportunities to apply what they learn in real-world ways. Actually, the notion of career technical education and kind of career pathways came up quite a bit. And that's not uncommon at all, we see a lot of particularly middle schools where we want to give students the opportunity to stay connected to and engage to school and not turn off from it. And one really great way to do that is sort of more active learning approaches. We also talked about students learning how to collaborate and communicate, and to develop confidence in themselves as team players and communicators, good citizens, and being part of the community of the school, and also connecting to the town of Lynn, and that kind of notion of being exposed to adult world themes and opportunities to learn from mentors within the community. And then finally, being world explorers, being able to develop a sort of global perspective on one's ideas. And in the, on this slide, you see the five Cs there, that was coined by the Partnership for 21st Century Skills. It's baked into Next Gen MCAS, it's baked into Next Gen Science Standards. And when we look at this set of learning goals that the group articulated together, four of those five Cs are there. Creativity is the only one that might be missing, and that doesn't mean, but to me, that connects with kind of joyful learning and self-directed learning. So I think this is very aligned with things that people are thinking about all around the Commonwealth and around the country. Next slide. And in terms of how these translated into ideas about the space, this is really, the whole idea of using the design patterns and getting people to prioritize them is to collectively develop a common language about what are the important elements of a design approach that would really meet the needs of Pickering. And so, these are all listed in priority order of what the group thought was most important. I'm just going to go through them real quickly. Agile classrooms, of course, the classroom is still the basic building block of any school, but we want them to be flexible enough to serve for more traditional delivery as well as more hands-on, project-based, small-group, independent, active learning. So, classrooms need to be large enough to, and have flexible modular furniture, they should all have good technology, and they should all have natural light. We talk about the idea of academic clusters or neighborhoods, and that means that we kind of get a bigger bang for the buck when we co-locate sets of classrooms along with things like teacher planning areas and extended learning areas like breakout rooms, and those then become a neighborhood. And this is particularly important for a middle school environment, because we're trying to support cross-discipline teaching teams, so this creates kind of a sense of place for those teams. It also creates a sense of belonging and ownership for students, and we know that that's particularly important for middle school students, to feel like at least one or two adults in the school know them really well, and that they have a sense of belonging. That connects to inclusion and serving kids, meeting them where they're at, and being able to vary delivery and teaching modalities, so that you can engage kids in ways that they can form success. So that means, in addition to more traditional delivery, more hands-on, also what we talk about as pull-over or push-in, targeted intervention, where within the context of the classroom, or an adjacent breakout room, students can get the individual care that they need, maybe from a teacher aide or paraprofessional. Welcoming arrival, that's the first impression of the school. We talked about a building that felt safe and welcoming at the same time, so clearly there are good sightlines. When you walk into the school, there's a sense of where to go, there's a friendly face that's greeting you, there's examples of work on the wall. Now, career pathways came up a number of times, and I think not necessarily in the context of career tech programs per se, but more as unified arts. And it was definitely discussed that the present school, Pickering, doesn't have spaces for art, music, instructional technology, graphic arts, drafting, woodwork, drama, cooking, sewing, and CTE, and those were all things that we talked about as being really important. So the career pathway idea is that you would have some of those more hands-on innovation spaces that would connect to the life of the school and give opportunities for kids to have a more whole-child approach and spaces to do that. Cafeteria, a multipurpose space, we're always thinking about getting multi, multiple uses out of our big-ticket items like cafeteria. And in this case, a cafeteria would have a full stage with lighting and good acoustics and sound, perhaps a movable wall that would allow the stage to be used as a music room. But that cafeteria space becomes a multipurpose space that can be used by the community for events. Security and welcome, we're always thinking about security, both passive and active, and also that sense of being welcoming at the same time. Extended learning spaces connect to the idea of breakout spaces, but we're also thinking, since buildings are fully wired and the technology infrastructure in this school will be robust, you can use every square inch of the building for a TAs as a teaching and learning station. So, we're oftentimes widening hallways in different areas and connecting them to the adjacent classrooms where students might spill out and do more independent or small-group work. Push-in, special education is just a given. DESI is going to be requiring us to create breakout rooms and areas for differentiated instruction that are in close proximity to or within general ed classrooms unless they're a sub-separate program. Indoor-outdoor connections, we think a lot about, especially since the pandemic, but really maximizing connections to outdoor learning opportunities, like an outdoor classroom, outdoor dining venues, safe venues. A lot of, a lot of times, we think about courtyards that might provide those outdoor connections as well as natural light. And finally, school as community resource, which is definitely, we're thinking about that in all the newer renovated schools we do. This is a big expense for the community, and it also should be a resource for the community, so that after hours and on weekends, there are areas of the building that can be completely locked off, safely blocked off from other parts of the school, and accessed as a resource. And oftentimes, the amenities that are accessible are things like the cafeteria or the library-media center or the gym, and maybe some classrooms as well for, for adult education or extended learning opportunities for the community. So, so those were the architectural themes that came up, and I think I'm going to hand it over now to Jean to talk about how that translates into the program.
It's actually going to.
We're going to talk about the educational.
It's okay, it's going to transition to me. Molly, you can go to the next slide. The themes that surfaced as a result of the visioning work helped to frame our thinking and the development of the educational plan. These themes get embedded throughout the plan as a whole. I want to remind everyone that the plan that you have is a draft and will remain a draft until MSBA gives their final approval, and the plan itself is MS, is an MSBA model with required components. It truly was a team that developed this draft of a plan, but I want to personally thank Molly Cohen and Principal Ritterhouse for the effort and time that they have put into getting this plan, this draft into place at this point. The main components that the MSBA model asks us to speak to are our core values and the visioning priorities that David just shared with us. We are asked to look at our current educational philosophy, which in our case have been like universal design for learning, inclusion, social-emotional learning, inclusive programming, innovative and supplemental course choices, which, which will continue to support the same approach of our educational philosophy for this plan. We will use those same educational philosophy. We're asked to look at our current Pickering Middle School and how it supports or does not support the philosophy, and then to think about how we envision the new updated Pickering Middle School and how it will support the philosophy. So, the updated version, thinking of the neighborhoods, the inclusion of students with disabilities and English learners, the flexible learning spaces, all of those things. While working through the educational plan, we also need to think about the form and function of each major category, how this educational plan translates to physical space and design. Jean Raymond from Raymond Design Associates will share the process and thinking in transferring this information into the space summary.
Thank you very much. It's been a, it's been a pleasure to work with the school leadership and David and the OPM and the folks on the city side. It's really been a very, very solid process. It's a multi-stage, say, process again, if we go through in the design as we conform to the requirements for the MSBA grant that we hope to secure on behalf of the city. And really, the first three or four months have been information gathering. We haven't started to design yet, but we started out documenting what exists on the sites, in the existing school, in other sites throughout the city. We went through that really great visioning process that David led, and then, as you saw, the visioning themes were kind of wrapped into a written document, multi, multi-pages that the school leadership can put together, the educational plan. And now, it's time for the folks on our side to kind of turn the themes and the goals of the district into physical space. And the first part of that is working out what's called a space summary. It's pretty much, it's a prescribed form that the MSBA asks people to do, it's very valuable. It lists. It lists all the spaces that you have in your existing school. And we compare them to guidelines that MSBA has certain requirements that they feel are appropriate and frankly, are appropriate as far as room types, room sizes, based on the student enrollment and the grade configuration. We have a little snippet of the worksheet on the right. It too, like the educational plan, is multi-pages. There's a whole series of columns to the right. But we have spent a good deal of time working with the school department and the city on documenting what exists, where the efficiencies lie, and then kind of taking the narratives that are in the educational plan and turning it into a certain number of spaces, certain sizes. A lot of talk about adjacencies. You know, one of the themes, strong themes, was creating these academic neighborhoods. So what do those consist of? You know, certain core classrooms attached to a science lab, maybe some extended learning space, maybe some planning rooms or some breakout rooms. And we are just in the process of creating this. It's going to add up to a certain amount of square footage. The square footages of all the individual rooms are going to conform with minimum and maximum sizes that MSBA establishes. And we're gearing up to make our first submission to MSBA on what is going to be three very robust submissions, packages, design, programming, all sorts of things between now and the spring, in which we will kind of look at options for the building and we're working with the school building committee and the school leadership to establish what we think would be appropriate for the city to build. But as we go through that process, this space summary is a LIM document. It will be modified as we go through it, as we get feedback either from the state or from the locals. It's a very collaborative process. And as I said, or I touched on, it's going to end up with X number of square feet. And we're always going to be kind of taking the size of the building and how we fit it onto a particular, you know, chosen site and always double-checking it against what's it going to cost to do this. And sometimes, we end up circling back and looking how we might refine the space or just saying, oh, this is wonderful, it all fits within the budget. So, for the next slide, Molly, it's just an overview. As I said, there are multiple submissions we'll be making. And I think we've talked about it earlier, that January 20th will be the preliminary design program where we'll be submitting the educational plan, that space summary that we just saw, and then a full evaluation of all the existing conditions, both the buildings and sites that we looked at. The MSBA, as Superintendent mentioned, will review the ed plan and the space summary, and they will provide feedback to the district, maybe requests for further clarifications, what do you think of this, or what do you mean by that? Because they want to make sure that the space summary accurately reflects the educational plan and the educational plan has been fully vetted. So, in the meantime, we will take that space summary and we will, as architects, designers, start to explore different ways that we can arrange the room and appropriate adjacencies, proper sizes on the site. And we'll look at multiple options on the site and again, work with everybody, including the school building committee, to make sure that we are looking at pros, cons, and coming up with the most cost-effective, educationally appropriate solution. There will be a design subcommittee that we will collaborate on, collaborate with. It's made up of people from the schools, people from the city, people from the building department. That really facilitates kind of straightforward and linear reviews and helps us refine all the options we're going to look at. And then, our next submission, next couple of submissions, well, our next one is going to be April 27th, in which we will have explored a bunch of physical solutions, you know, that reflect the educational plan and then informing the MSBA as to which of these the city thinks is most appropriate. So that'll be kind of moved in the spring, April and the day. Beyond that, there's, you know, many, many months of further design, but you know, I'm looking forward to making this reality and getting done, starting early now. So I'll just stand there for a moment.
So I just want to bring it back to our common, you know, focus areas and priorities as a district. All of our work on the Pickering education plan is rooted in our district-focused area of equitable access to rigorous learning and the mission of the LIM Public Schools. This year, across all schools, we have a common school improvement goal. We're heavily focused on closing the opportunity gaps for our marginalized students and fulfilling our vision of drawing upon the strength of our community, our families, our students, and our partners. LIM Public Schools commits to fulfilling the intellectual, physical, social-emotional potential of all our students. We work together so our students learn to thrive, advance, and impact the greater community and the world. And we hope that this education plan reflects that. We feel it does. And finally, I just want to note that our entire process was well-defined district and school priority areas. We created, in collaboration with many stakeholders, we utilized feedback and data to analyze trends and patterns, and we identified equitable learning neighborhoods that mitigate opportunity gaps. We open it up for any questions.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you, everyone, for all your commitment on this project. I'm on the school building committee as well as Member Gailey and the many folks that have been committed to this process. It's definitely a very thorough experience. I think from my own just experiences being on the school building committee, there's a lot of moving parts to this project. I do recommend that we have a website that's active, that the public has access to, to learn about the project. Because there's so many moving parts, I do think this project does require the collaboration that we have provided. And I want to thank everyone that has been collaborated on this project. The last, actually, my question was around the student enrollment trends. As we, you know, foresee, we build, like kind of like when Marshall was built, when we built Thurgood Marshall, like the student enrollment trends, they keep doubling. We keep seeing more and more and more. Could you discuss how this plays into our final phase when we get to that point in terms of establishing like the space sizes or the cluster sizes? When I was looking inside the project, it's like, this can always be adjusted. I know we're modifying this, but could we just go a little bit, maybe this might be for the consultant, on just how we are planning and where are we pulling from that? How are we collecting that trend data?
So, I mean, we always do a percentage of increase, like we project what our enrollment will be. Sometimes, it's not an exact science because, you know, when things happen in the world, things shift and we end up getting more kids. Or sometimes, like when the pandemic happened, we, our enrollment went down a little bit. What I will say is that, and I think Member Gailey could probably speak to this, when we were going through the space summary, you know, we're modeling it to what Marshall is, right? An 1,100-student building. We know that Marshall is more than 1,100 right now. Building a Pickering that's 1,100 will be able to shift students. We looked at spaces, had to make hard decisions of what spaces we wanted to increase square footage, what spaces did we need to decrease square footage, spaces that could be multipurpose spaces that if the enrollment went up, they could be utilized. And we're seeing that at Marshall now. There are spaces that were identified for certain functions but were designed in a way that they could be used in multiple purposes, right? And so, because the enrollment of Marshall went up, we've had to use some of those spaces as classroom spaces. And so, we're being very attuned to that, being very cognizant of being fiscally sound and not going over square footage to a point where financially, it's going to be a burden. So we spent a lot of time the other day, hours, I think, really teasing through it. And there's still more we have to look at. But we're trying very hard to design a building that we can be proud of as a community, that our students deserve, our teachers deserve, to work in and to learn in. So, you know, there's no exact science to it, but it's about being smart and flexible and thinking outside of the box and developing spaces that can be used in multiple ways.
Thank you so much for that. And I see the work. It's just, when you go through, it's so many different layers to this process. And again, I want to thank everyone that's been part of that process and it's definitely well-needed and the commitment is there. And thank you all.
Member Gailey.
As the chairperson of Building and Grounds, it was a pleasure to sit on that last meeting. I think it did last almost three or four hours. And we did go through a lot of square footage and we don't want to burden the city, so we're very cognizant of that idea and conscientious. So, we had ISD Department Head Mike Donovan there and he and Lynn Stapleton, who is on the call right now, she also inputted. And so, when we sort of went off on square footages, she would say, oh, this is where we are financially right now on the budget. So, we're really working on that. We're looking at what we want in the school. We're looking at how many over-square footage we are so that it's going to go to the Mass Building Association. They're going to go through it. Then they're going to kick it back to us and say, you can't have this, you can't have this, we will not pay for this, we will pay for this. So it's going to be, it's a long tedious process, but by the end, we're going to get a product that I think our school department can be proud of and that our students will be so happy, Kevin, so happy, right? So, thank you. But thank you for that question too, Brian.
Member Magnolia.
I was just going to, I was going to add in, so the MSBA, before they invited the city into this program, this grant program, they actually do a very robust enrollment study themselves. So, they came up with, you know, they look at the whole district, they look at the trends within the city, and they are the ones that established that 1,100 pupils would be the correct size for this new school. And then, as we started to go through the space summary and the planning, we actually took a lot of what we're calling the lessons learned from Thurgood Marshall. And we've actually added another cluster, one of these academic neighborhoods. And so, at the sixth-grade level, is actually, it's programmed for fewer pupils in each classroom. So, where Thurgood Marshall had nine academic neighborhoods or clusters, we actually are planning around 10 here. So there's some kind of built-in enrollment capacity there. And then, all the core facilities, such as the gymnasium and the cafeteria and all these shops, they're all, they're all, I don't want to say oversized, but they're all able to accommodate enrollment growth. And that's part of the MSBA template. They don't, they don't want people coming back, you know, in 10 years and saying, oh, we have to make our cafeteria bigger or our gymnasium bigger. So, we are very, very cognizant about what the city has experienced at the middle school level, which is one we're most familiar with. And we're trying to address flexibility for future enrollment growth if there are some other models.
Yeah, and just quickly to add on that, because I think the MSBA approval of 1,100, obviously, that's where that conversation starts. I think the flexibility within that is what we're talking about here with the building. The enrollment trends is clearly something we pay close attention to and particularly in our situation. And the MSBA has the analysis that they do. This is also something we've worked with MAPC on, the Metropolitan Regional Planning Council. They do enrollment projections for the region and have done specific analyses for us as part of different planning processes. So, it's really hard to predict, as we all know. It's a result of a really wide variety of factors, but obviously, it's important to us and we try to get the best information that we can.
Member Magnolia.
So, this is a slightly different vein than we've been heading down previously. And I'm not sure at what point in the design process this comes up, but I'm genuinely interested to hear how we're thinking about energy efficiency as we proceed with this building. Because one of the things that's happened in our district is that because our buildings are so old, they use so much energy. And obviously, just new buildings use less just by their very design. But we were talking about indoor and outdoor spaces. Well, building for passive solar gain kills two birds with one stone. And so, I'm kind of curious to hear at what point the discussion around, you know, building technologies into this that will pay dividends long-term for the city with regards to energy costs, with regards to climate resiliency. The site selection is a flooding-prone place, which means that has to be taken into consideration in terms of the design of the building, right? But also, to not be thinking about these things now means that the city would have to spend money on the building later when these become issues. So if you could just talk a little bit about that, I'm not sure to whom.
Well, I'll start and then I'm going to let Jean or Lynn take over from there. What I will say is we have begun preliminary conversations, actually, at the meeting that we had in looking at the space summary. There were some discussions around that, but there's also some limitations, I believe, on what MSBA will allow based on what they reimburse. So I'm going to segue that to either Jean or Lynn, who could probably speak more on that.
I'm happy to land on you, if you want to do an overview, feel free.
I think in terms of sustainability and more energy efficiency, we are required to build to those minimums by MSBA. And we will be striving to get two extra incentive points on our reimbursement by meeting a certified goal in terms of green design. And that will either be the USGBC lead process or the Mass Collaborative for High Performance Schools. So, MSBA does have a requirement for that where we will exceed the Energy Code requirements. And we will be working with the city to see how much further that we can advance those sustainability goals in regards to that part of the question.
And the state did just issue a new Energy Code, which is part of the building code. It's very, very restrictive. Thurgood Marshall was a very energy-efficient building, given the, you know, the size of it and how much it costs to operate a fully air-conditioned building on a square footage basis. Pickering is going to exceed that energy efficiency. It's, the state is mandating that, not just through the MSBA program, but, you know, through the building code. And then, we do, even in the next few months, as we're doing little test fits, we call them, where we're designing little buildings and we're placing them on the site, we're always cognizant of where the sun is and how we can take advantage of it and how we can block it in the summer so we're not spending more on air conditioning. But I will say that even though Thurgood Marshall was very energy-efficient, this one, I don't want to say it's going to be twice as efficient, but it's- want to say it's going to be twice as efficient, but it's going to be more efficient. The state code is driving things up. So, and it's an exciting thing for us.
Well, I would just add, too, that envisioning, we did talk about sustainability as a priority and about the idea of the building itself being a teaching tool, so that some of those sustainable elements are really made manifest and to students and teachers and that you can, in ways that you can interact with the building and the systems and understand the energy usage of the building, understand the kinds of materials that have been used in the building that are, that are energy-efficient or green. So that was definitely something that was discussed.
Member Gailey.
One other thing we did discuss, addressing the flooding zone that you were talking, discussing, we've had several conversations, and I think that we have pushed the issue with Jean, that we need to take care of this problem, put them on pylons, figure out a way to possibly, but this is way down the road, possibly take the flooding water and put them into tanks so that it would stop a flooding. And then, as the pond water recesses from a flood, then you just drop that water back in there. So those are the kind of things that we are discussing, possibilities that we have been looking into, but we're not at that point yet of this process. But when we get there, we will keep that in mind, I promise you. That's not out of my mind. Thank you.
What is the will of the committee with respect to the Pickering Middle School Educational Plan?
I'd like to move that we approve the new Pickering Middle School Educational Plan.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gailey.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Penya.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, the very large team for all the great work on this and a lot more to come. But thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, because I've worked on about eighty MSBA projects over the last 10 years, and I read a lot of education plans. And I do want to congratulate the folks that wrote this education plan, because it is, it is very well-done. It's, it's very articulate, it clearly lays out sort of the present practices, future practices, how the building connects to it. I think that the MSBA is going to have very positive feedback. You know, there are certainly always details that there might have questions about, but I really think it's very well-written.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great work to the team, yeah. All right, the next two items are around scheduling our meetings. The February 23rd is winter break, and then we typically reschedule that first meeting in March. I think last year, we did it in the middle there, on March 2nd. Would that work for the committee to do Thursday, March 2nd? Great. So can we put that in form of motion to cancel the 23rd and 9th and put on for the 2nd?
I'd like to move that we cancel the 23rd and 9th and create a meeting on March 2nd.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gailey.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Penya.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes. Yeah, we'll have to see what the subcommittees are, but yeah, typically, the regular meeting's at 7:00 and then subcommittees before. All right, any motion to amend the agenda to put the executive session last?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Superintendent Tewiler.
Oh. I'm secretary of office. It's okay, I get it. I come from a large family. My name is, my father can say it. I was never called Deb. Always Donna, Carol, Jeannie, Dee. It's okay.
Number Zero.
Thank you. As I always do, I start with a quote, "We must always change, renew, rejuvenate ourselves, otherwise we harden," by Joanne Wolfgang von Goethe. "The new year is always an opportunity for everyone to renew, rejuvenate, and reflect on our successes, misgivings, and any tragedies from the previous year. It is also an opportunity to see our new pathway as a clean slate, where we can learn new approaches, see tasks with a new lens, and adjust practices that we have used in the past. In the world of education, the new year represents the halfway point in our school year and an opportunity to do a formative assessment, a midpoint check-in, to look at our work and adjust or make shifts. Part of this formative assessment is a self-reflection on our, our own work and the work we do with others and our work in relationship to the whole district. While the fall of 2022 has not been easy and brought with it many difficult and traumatic events, I continue to be optimistic that our students and staff will continue the forward motion in our learning and work during the second half of the school year, as well as the calendar year. I have full faith in our staff and students that we will, we will together continue to push ourselves to regain and build back all that was lost in the previous years. Much of my optimism for the year ahead comes from the past couple of weeks, when I have had the opportunity to visit two schools, Washington School and Callahan School. I got to see firsthand the work of our students and teachers that they're doing day in and day out. Students were interacting with the new math curriculum resource and working through the productive struggle of measurement with centimeter cubes. Classroom teachers were working with students on the writing process and how to organize their topic and details in two-column notes. I also had the opportunity to hand out dictionaries to our third graders donated by the Rotary Club of Lynn and the Redding Cooperative Bank. The interaction with the students around our learning together was joyful and quite honestly inspiring. Great things are happening in the Lynn Public Schools, and we just need time and support to move us all forward. We will continue to fine-tune the services and support needed for our students and families, and will begin to look ahead to plan for summer learning and our work for the next school year. Assessment results from the stamp assessment have been finalized for the bilingual, biliterate stipend for staff. 123 staff participated in the stamp language assessment in December, with 74% of the staff meeting the criteria for the stipend in seven different languages across 26 buildings. Staff were notified of results after the winter break, and we will be assessing our final 14 candidates on January 14th in eight different languages that are not offered by the stamp assessment. Currently, 149 total staff across all buildings in bargaining units have met the established criteria for the stipend. A final update will be provided after the January 14th results are made available. I do want to give a huge shout-out to the MLE Department and Kara Zubricki for the organization and communication of this new initiative in LPS and to celebrate our linguistic diversity. We just heard a Pickering building project update with the educational plan, but we also, I wanted to share that we were able to collect feedback and answer questions from community members around the site location during our community forum meeting that was held on December 19th. And the school building committee met on December 21st and voted unanimously to move, to approve, sorry, to approve the Magnolia Park site as the best option for the new Pickering Middle School. Orin Wright is moving to a new position with Brandeis University to work with the security team there. We thank him for his service, and we will sadly miss him. We wish him the best in his new endeavor, but we welcome John Mackin, who has been appointed as our new school safety officer. He brings with him many years of experience and training, and we look forward to working with him and keeping our schools safe for all. And finally, three years ago, the committee voted to authorize the superintendent the authority to evaluate registrations for students over the age of 20. Although this is not a frequent occurrence, it is one that we take seriously. As part of this decision, there is a commitment to update the school committee twice a year. At this point in 2223 school year, we have had 10 requests by students over the age of 20. Two were permitted to register. In these cases, the students were very close to completion, and we have the appropriate support to facilitate their success. Those who were not permitted, we did refer them to local partner organizations who could better support them in their needs.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, a motion for the executive session, and just make the motion and state the two items, please.
Make a motion that we move to executive session to, one, approve the minutes for the December 8th, 2022, and also request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Dr. Yvonne Alvarez.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gailey.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Penya.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes.
Can I, real quick, before we move in, is it okay? I just, there were a couple of things, the open mic today, obviously, was very disturbing. I did share with you the information about the Stop the Violence Speaker Series that is happening on February 8th, so I wanted you to know that. But I also wanted you to know that Chief Ready had reached out, that the U.S. Attorney's Office was offering a virtual training for parents around cyber, internet issues and cyber bullying. And he asked me to share it with our school community, which I did. I got an email saying that they, it's the first time they have over-enrolled for this training, and that they will be offering, they had well over 1,000 people interested. And so, they're going to offer it again in the spring. So, you know, that speaks to that we're trying to resolve some of the problems we're hearing about. And also, in the future, in a future meeting, we will share more detailed information, but we do have a committee that is working on anti-violence. We started off calling it anti-violence, and now we're really engaging, we're shifting our thinking around engagement of our students and how we can start to resolve some of the aggressions and the problems that we're seeing. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Yeah, Member Castellanos.
Sorry, I apologize. This is a general question about the committee that was, I know John, previous member Ford was serving on a advisory committee with, oh my goodness, I forgot the name of the committee. When we were talking about vaping, like, when we prioritized.
Oh, the health.
That's right.
Yes. Are we?
The, yes. So another meeting, we will be actually presenting the data. We just got the data in for the health risk survey. So we will, oh, you were, you were asking about the meeting.
I was supposed to be on the board.
Yeah, actually, Brian, I just met with Colleen Peterson today, and she's starting that up again this, you'll be getting an invitation shortly. They're running it this spring.
Okay, so I, when I heard that, I was like, I figured it was going to start up soon. Too soon. Thank you, sorry for the interruption. That was good. Great.
All right. All right.
It's a good advisor.
Return to regular session, please.
Second. Member Castellanos. Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gailey.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Penya.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.